All right, we're gonna get this meeting started. The notice pub requirement provided for the open public's meeting law has been satisfied. Notice haven't been properly given, said notice haven't been transmitted to the Korea News on Monday, April 12, 2021, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmembers Davis.
President.
McKenna.
President.
McCray.
President.
Mills Ransom.
President.
Welch.
President.
Vice President Good.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Present.
Council President, we have all members present and accord.
Thank you. Today, we will begin with the Fire Department. This evening, the Plainfield Municipal Council will conduct its budget deliberations for the 2021 calendar municipal year, calendar year, operating budget. This session is scheduled for the Fire Department and the Department of Health and Social Services. We'll have the Fire Department go first. So Shep, no problems at all if you wanna black your screen. And we'll get to you when we're done with the Fire Department. So Fire Director Childress, good evening, welcome.
Evening.
Thank you for being here today. Would you please begin with the presentation of your budget?
Yes. I'll start with a brief statement. Good evening, Mayor Map, councilmembers, C-Bag members, and the general public. I'm Director Childress, and tonight I'll be presenting the Fire Department's 2021 budget. But first, I would like to give you a brief overview of the Fire Department. The Fire Department is comprised of 105 brave men and women who tirelessly protect our city. And any and all accomplishments of the Fire Department are due to their hard work and their dedication. I am only the director of the Symphony. The Fire Department consists of three divisions: Fire Suppression, Fire Prevention, and Office of Emergency Management. We have a total of 103 professional brave men and women on call with an overall budget of $10,874,917. This year, Mayor Map requested I dig deep and fine tune Fire Department's budget. The effects of COVID-19 pandemic have not only caused health crisis, but it's also caused a financial crisis. As such, we worked and succeeded in providing our services without an increase to the budget. The areas I will highlight are those which are of great concern, which was always of great concern. Overtime, which you can see, has been slowly trending downward, while at the same time providing the same quality of service at all ti- which at all times can be challenging. We have been slowly gaining momentum toward our optimum staffing, which is 109. We currently have six cadets in the academy, and we are still short four more, which is also challenging due to the balancing act of hiring and retirements, which almost never go hand in hand with the budget. Another area I highlight is the Office of Emergency Management, where you can see it has increased. This is due to our global pandemic. The role of emergency management within the city is to prepare, mitigate, respond, and recover from all citywide disasters, whether natural or man-made. In order to meet the desired and required demands of our residents, this line item has increased while still staying within our overall budget. Lastly, I would like to say that the Fire Department recognizes and truly values our residents as valuable customers. Therefore, I will always do the best to manage the Fire Department's budget in the best interest of our residents. I'll now take your questions.
Thank you. Let's start with Councilman McKenna. Yeah, Director, thank you for the overview, Director Childress. How many, how many retirements are you expecting this year?
There's about two people that can leave, but that doesn't mean that they're leaving.
Okay, so there's two that, that hit the number, but they haven't put in any papers yet.
Right.
So you could be, you could be short, you said you were short four, my, my.
Well, we're short four firefighters.
Okay.
The, the ones that can leave are officers, so that just means that you, you start falling in from the bottom.
Okay, but then that makes you short towards the bottom, right?
Right.
So is it kinda safe to assume short four is short four, just across the board?
Short four is short four.
Okay, so you could be short six if the two guys pull the plug on themselves.
They pull the plug, or a variety of things happen sometimes, but yes.
Oh, God forbid, that stuff. Now, real quickly on overtime, it, it did go down in 2019, but it went up in 2020. And you're, you're asking for an increase over last year of about 70 grand, 69,000. So you, you had mentioned that it was, that it was going down, but it's actually, it went up last year.
Oh, I believe we asked for a 695, correct?
Uh, you'd, so in, so in 2019, it was 540,000 in overtime. In 2020, it was 626,000. And then this year, you're asking for 690,000.
Well, what, what you see last year, beginning of the year, when COVID hit, we restricted everyone from going on vacation. So that's not a true number, because for three months, not a soul went on vacation. So that's why the overtime was so low. Now that they can go on vacation, things will stabilize and people will get back. So if I try to lower that number any lower, it would, it would be a false number.
Okay, so.
Not accurate.
Okay, I am, I'm good, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Councilman McKenna. We'll now move to Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
Good evening, Director Childress.
Good evening.
I'd like to compliment you on the comp time going down by 50% from 20K to 10K. I wanted to ask, what is the retirement pay, the 75K that's there for retirement pay?
Uh, that is there for if people have vacation or sick time that they get compensated for, they, what they have left on the books. And that money has been transferred to the general fund, so it's still there, but it's in the general fund.
Okay, and the other question was, I'm not sure of what your stationary printing and office supply line represents. It's approximately $10,000, but you could just tell me what kind of printing that happens in the Fire Department?
That's, that's for all the stationary, the, the printers. If we, what desk out of that, or any other supplies, just natural operating expenses.
Okay, so it's more like the paper for printing supplies, the printer and the ink and stuff like that?
The ink, uh, desks. You know, we, we made a few changes here, so we needed by desk, all those things come out of that line.
Okay, that's good, because I don't know, I was looking at stationary, and I was saying, how many letters are you writing? Okay. I'm finished, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilwoman Welch, any questions for Director Childress?
Good evening, Director.
Good evening.
I would like to start off first with a thank you for your leadership, especially through COVID. I'm sure it was extremely challenging, knowing that all of you still stayed out there and came in consistently with the crisis and lives truly being threatened. So I basically had the same question that Councilwoman Mills Ransom had in reference to the stationary, so it was already answered. And again, I will just finish mine off with a thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you. Director Childress, one, I appreciate in your goals and objectives, talking about the development of fillable forms for the website. I think that's very important, especially we want to have as much contact lists processes as possible, so thank you for that. In looking at the goals and objectives for OEM, it seemed that most things were put on hold due to COVID, but can you discuss some of the accomplishments that you all were able to have during this global pandemic? Yeah, let's start there.
Okay. Some of the goals we were able to achieve was we moved the Bureau of Fire Prevention, which used to be on the second floor. We moved that downstairs to, to limit any other citizens having to come into the building to use that office, so we moved that downstairs, which also made it handicap accessible, so we accomplished that. We accomplished, as far as the Are You OK program and drone program and things of that nature, this, the equipment was purchased, but not able to be put into place. So someone did ask that question, would it increase the budget? No, it's just a matter of us getting those things into place, getting the training, and then getting the programs, you know, activated, so.
I don't wanna interrupt you. I, I did read over the goals and objectives, I was really focusing on the Office of Emergency Management. Like, what are some of the things they were able to accomplish? Because when I looked at those goals, it seemed that everything was on hold due to COVID, but if you wanna come back to that, that's fine.
No, so we did manage to keep the CERT team going, which is Citizens Emergency Management. I believe we added one member to that. We're still working on the team, CERT, the Team CERT. We're continuing the membership drive. Some of my, a lot of my CERT members are, may have underlying conditions, so it's only, so many situations that I could put them in safely, dealing with the public and going out. But we also handed out masks to the general public when this all began. We procured masks from various different places. We should provide, provided support to the Plainfield Rescue Squad and participate in, you know, a bunch of other city programs.
Okay, that's fine. So the next question is acting pay. It seems that the Fire Department uses acting pay more than any other department or division in the city. So can you explain, just for the people who are watching, why that is? And a part A to that is, in 2020, despite the number of challenges that you all had, you were able to significantly cut down on using acting pay. Do you know what that is? Attested to, I know you said that people couldn't go on vacation for a while. Is that the reason why it was cut down so significantly?
Yes, acting pay is used when a firefighter replaces an officer. So since there was no officers going on vacation, there's no acting time. Now, there's times when we can use actors, or what we wanna call interns, and it's sometimes we can't due to contractual things. So, but what you see is because there was no officers on vacation, so no one had to replace them.
Got you. Um, also, um, can you explain why the comp timeline was so overspent? You budgeted for $10,000, but you used $30,000.
Because that all depends on, if a person leaves and they have comp time, you have to pay them for them. So you never know when a person decides they're gonna leave, or they're gonna retire. So if I put, I got two people, I can just look at their comp time and see what they have, but when it comes time to pay out, you know, I have to pay them what they owed.
Okay, so between the terminations and the retirements, those were all payouts?
Payouts, that's what the comp time is for, yes. Or, or, or if a person earned comp time, or earned current time also. So if he worked overtime and he took comp time instead, then you get paid, you can get paid for it at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you, those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councilman Good, any questions for Director?
Director Childress, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Like I always say, by the time it gets down to almost the last two people, the most of the questions have been asked. Councilwoman Davis and Councilwoman Mills Ransom asked, each one of them asked one of my questions. But I have the privilege of being the committee chair for the five divisions, so you and I, we talk a lot. We don't talk numbers, but we talk, you know, as far as the committee is concerned, so I do appreciate some of the information that you have given to me, the committee. And I have to say that my compliments to you and the Fire Division, because you've been given the task that all the other divisions in the city have been given to adjust to COVID-19, and you've done a very good job of the adjustments that you've made in the firehouses and, and the way all of your crew has adjusted to those changes. So that being said, thank you for all that you do. I tell you this all year round, so it's nothing new for you to hear that from me, we appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all, Council President.
Thank you. Finance Chair.
Good evening, Director Childress. First, I want to say thank you and thank the department for all that you do and all that you've done. I know during the pandemic, I saw you and your fellow department guys out supporting the city's effort to make sure residents had the things they needed during this time of COVID, and that was, you know, something that you guys did and did it with a smile under your mask. And I just wanna thank you for that. I don't really have any questions, because I see what you do, and you, what you do speaks for itself. So just thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Director Childress, also thank you for me. Thank all the men and women on your, on your force. They've been doing a great job for our city, we're fortunate to have them. Professional men and women at every instance that I've had the opportunity to cross paths with any, any, anyone there. Just, just a couple of questions. So I, I know in light of the pandemic, you changed your certificate or, or your, your, your fire inspection for home sales process. Can you, can you just describe that a little bit and give the reasoning why that you're not doing in-person fire inspections?
Okay, that actually came from the Division of Fire Safety down to us, restricting us from going out and doing in-person inspections. So the residents were allowed to take pictures and submit them to us as part of their inspection. So that's why that was done.
Okay. Can you just, just describe the Division of Fire Safety, the hierarchy?
Yeah, that, that's, that's from the state, Division of Fire Safety and Training.
Okay, so that's being done statewide, it's not just us, but they've been asking.
Right, they, they put the mandate out that there would be no in-person inspections and that they could take pictures in lieu of that.
Okay, so how's that been working for, for the staff? Has it been something that's been?
Uh, it's, it's been challenging for the staff and, and the residents, making sure they take the, the pictures correctly, or having to print them out and things of that nature. But, you know, unfortunately, that's the process. The state has released some restrictions, so we will be starting back, I believe, May 1st doing in-person inspections.
Okay. All right, good to know. Okay, has, has it slowed down any? I mean, I know that there's still quite a bit of real estate transactions going on in the city. So comparatively, have you still done the same amount of picture inspections?
Actually, actually even more.
More?
More, more than the norm.
So is it, is it an option, or would you entertain continuing that process or some hybrid of that process? As you move forward, is this something we, we should embrace in the future? Or is it best to just go in person if you can?
It's best to go in person. But, but if COVID or any other pandemic should happen, we have that process already, you know, down, so we can just transition back over again.
Sounds good. Sounds good, well, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to really scrutinize the budget that's, that is even tighter than the one that we approved last year. You know, so I do appreciate you, you know, looking closely at it to see where you can tighten up, where you could eliminate, and, you know, I don't have any, you know, mu- mu- much more to say, you know, but so, but thank you to the men and women.
Thank you.
Okay, so this time, you don't need to go to C-Bag, we'll go, we'll have C-Bag answer questions after we get through the Department of Health and Social Services. All right, so Director Brown, available? How are you today, sir?
I'm well, sir, how are you today?
Stuff goes and objectives, I mean, did I answer C-Bag's questions yet?
Well, do you wanna, you wanna do that now?
Yeah, I can finish her.
Let's go, let's go out of town, I think we should just do C-Bag, because it probably, probably, we'll see if C-Bag has any questions, that way I can let you go.
Their question is already submitted, so I have the answers to them.
All right, great, great.
Good.
Good evening. The question.
One of the questions was, can you explain the Are You OK program? Okay, the Are You OK program was a program that a lot of fire departments do around the country as community initiatives. We've done it in the past years ago, and then we stopped because of the, the program itself stopped working. So now we wanted to start it back up, we couldn't because of COVID. What the program is, is seniors sign up to the program. We put their number into a dollar system. That program dials the senior citizen. At that point, if they don't answer, it go, we dial, the machine dials back again in 15 minutes or so, whatever time we set. And at that point, it lets us know that that person needs to be checked on. So at that point, we will come out, or we will send someone out to do a welfare check. In the past, we found seniors that were down and hurt and couldn't help themselves and, or, you know, or other. But it was very, very good program before. Unfortunately, we're still taking our time with it because of COVID. The next question was, can you provide some examples of human resource issues that you're looking to resolve, and what resources you would need to accomplish this goal? I need a little bit more information on that.
Uh-huh. Director Childress, that was actually in your goals.
Okay, for, when you say human, my reas- okay, I will come back to that one.
Yeah, it was in your goals.
Okay, we'll come back to that. The other one was, are there any efficiency? Is there any efficiency that can be realized by adopting the camera system the police department uses in their vehicles? So we're looking to put cameras inside of the vehicles that would document accidents. We've had, you know, a few accidents that, you know, those trucks are very high-priced tickets. The repairs are very costly, so we wanna be able to document, you know, the accidents, how they happened, who was at fault, and we can use, use those as training aids to make sure it doesn't happen again. So that was, that's where it provides the efficiency. Next one was, how many of your 2020 goals were on hold due to COVID? Is the funds for those budget items still available, or is additional funding requested? No, those items are within the budget. The portable showers. We believe the portable shower and restroom program is a wonderful idea, but would it be stationary or mobile unit? We haven't decided that yet. Most likely mobile, and then if it was stationary, it's on a, what they call a skid, so we can move it around town. It's just more cumbersome to move. But yes, it would be one or the other. The other question was, would it provide, would it fall under existing insurance policy, or would we need to purchase additional insurance? I'm pretty sure that, you know, like any other vehicles within the city, it would add to the city's insurance policy, you know, with some costs added to that. We don't know that exact cost, because we haven't got the exact specs for the, the trailer. How soon do you anticipate having the Bureau of Fire Prevention fees and/or permits online? And can fees and appointments for fire inspections be combined with certificate of inspection? Okay, so the forms are online, they are fillable now. You can print them if you would like, or they are, or you can fill it out online. The all-pay system has not been connected yet, though, so you can't pay online, and you can't make appointments online, that part we haven't completed yet. And as far as combining with the certificate of CO, you know, we, we don't, we can't control what the other departments do and what time they, they make their appointments for the CO. So it would be quite hard to make sure they happen all on the exact same day. So that's probably something that would take a little bit, be a little bit more challenging to make happen. Mobile communications. Under mobile communications, what is driving the increase of 50, 50, 55%? So we now have Wi-Fi in all three firehouses. Unfortunately, these buildings never had Wi-Fi. We now have Wi-Fi, and we have mobile data systems. So that's what the increase is for. Now I have Wi-Fi in all three firehouses where we never had it before. Next question is turnout gear. Can you explain the difference in the 2020 budget appropriated in actual? So some years ago, we need, we needed turnout gear, but the cost of the turnout gear is close to half a million dollars. So we decided to spread it out over the course of the coming years. So each year, we tried to allocate around $80,000, $90,000 for turnout gear. Last year, the budget was significantly reduced, and we took from that line item. Once we realized that we had funds that were saved from overtime, we were able to transfer money to that line item, purchase the gear for new guys, and purchase some second sets for guys that are already here that is required. And I believe that's it.
There actually was one question about,
The retirement.
Yes, there was no money allocated for retirement.
Right, that money is actually in the general fund. So the money is actually there, but it's been put into the general fund. So if someone does retire, they will receive their compensation. And the question that I didn't answer, I will get back to you on that question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, Council President, I could probably shed light. Director, it was related to the Rogers Study, Group Study Recommendations, that HR point.
Or C-Bag's question, you mean?
Yeah, that HR res- or Human Resources issues, it, it was related in your goals to the continuing the Rogers Group Study Recommendation.
Right, yeah, I'll research that and get back to it.
Thank you. Okay, do, thank you, thank you very much, Director Childress. You can go black or exit the meeting.
Okay.
I appreciate your participation, Director.
Thank you.
Director Brown, again, welcome. Please go right ahead with introducing your budget overview.
Good evening, Council President Hockaday, Members of the City Council, C-Bag Chairperson Bright, Members of C-Bag and Mayor Matt. I am Shep Brown, Director of the Department of Health and Social Services. The department comprises Divisions of Health, Community Development, Community Relations and Social Services, and the Plainfield Performing Arts Center. 2020 will be a year that many of us will never forget. A global pandemic, an imploding economy, and a surge in support for racial equity and a national awakening. Amidst all that turmoil, the Department of Health and Social Services kept going. The 42 staff members worked hard every day and transitioned to remote work quickly and successfully, with some staff members pivoting from their original positions. No amount of professional development could have prepared the staff for 2020, yet they persevered, and I cannot thank them enough. While we did not meet all of our 2020 goals, we strove to keep on task and our mission. During 2020, we provided some services, the following services, I'm sorry. The Health Division investigated 4,245 COVID-positive cases, vaccinated 305 residents, investigated 52 new lead cases, investigated 183 health nuisance complaints, investigated 185. uh, investigated a hundred and eighty-three health nuisance complaints, investigated a hundred and eighty-five non-COVID infectious disease cases, issued two thousand three hundred and sixty-five certificates, one hundred and seventy-seven marriage certificates, five hundred and seventy death certificates, and one hundred and ninety-four marriage certificate licenses. We also ordered it three thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight children's immunization records. The Division of Community Relations provided three hundred bag lunches three times a week, uh, for the most of the year, reaching sixteen thousand four hundred residents. They provided two thousand fabric face masks, six thousand two hundred individual, uh, families were provided emergency food and essential supplies. Three hundred and fifty-five individuals received an emergency food gift card. Three thousand one hundred and twenty-five, one individuals received homeless and emergency response referrals. We connected volunteers and food resources for emergency food providers and educated them, uh, on food safety through our health educators. The Division of Community Development collected three hundred and seventy thousand in vacant fees, which is an increase over twenty nineteen for a total, for a four-year total of one point one million dollars. We issued ninety-two emergency abatements resulting in eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars in fees. Uh, we, uh, a court enforcement resulted in twenty-six thousand five hundred in court fees, reduction of seventeen percent. We are responsible for HUD CDB community, uh, proposals totaling one point eight million dollars. Uh, we served thirteen homeowners with a housing rehabilitation loan of nineteen thousand dollars on average. We relocated twenty-five people due to condemnation, and we still manage eight million four hundred and twenty-six dollars in chat, which is called Comprehensive Housing Assistant Program Loan Portfolio. We have nine hundred and seventy-eight active loans. We are building the organizational strength to meet the changing needs of the communities we serve, regardless of income, age, race, gender, or gender orientation. Through our advocacy, we continue to dedicate resources to issues that impact urban communities. Because of the work, uh, in anti-human trafficking and racial equity, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services identified Plainfield as a pilot city to develop training programs for all levels of government and communities to fight human trafficking. The city of Plainfield is one of a handful of cities in the nation that declared racism a public health crisis nine months before the CDC. And unfortunately, we have seen the consequences of these disparities in healthcare. Because of our work in this space, the city was selected by the National League of Cities as one of seven cities to participate in a year-long action a year-long action cohort, Cities of Opportunity, Racial Equity, Turning Crisis Into Pathways to Equity and Resilience. While P-PAC was generally closed, as were all cultural institutions, we provided space for Centers 2020 and Community COVID Testing. We also saw grants that resulted in the city receiving its first National Endowment for the Arts Award, and we are still up for consideration for a second NEA award. We are heartened by the numerous requests to host events at P-PAC. Many are particularly interested in the Steinway Grand Piano donated to P-PAC by the Plainfield Arts Council. Council President, the department is forty-five percent grant-funded and is about one point nine percent of the total municipal budget. There are contractual salary increases and a request for seventy thousand in overtime for the Division of Health for the COVID response. I'm pleased to answer any questions on the department's fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget request. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll start with your, your chair, Councilman Davis.
Thank you. Um, Director Brown, I want to say, uh, for a department head who's had to deal with a lot of issues in twenty twenty, um, being the lead for the global pandemic, uh, it sounds like your department was able to get done a lot of work despite, well, while battling, helping the city battle COVID. Um, so I just have a few questions. Um, so first, um, for the Director of Health and Social Services budget, can you explain the variation in outside consulting fees? You went from fifteen hundred in twenty nineteen to nine thousand in twenty twenty, but then back down to two thousand in twenty twenty-one?
Just want to make sure I'm on the right page. So what we, what we did for outside consultant is, we had initially planned on, um, going into twenty twenty to do more, uh, development within the community. So we were going to bring in individuals and organizations to do kind of community planning, uh, and community strategic planning and those kind of things. We also brought in consultants to help us, and we did get approved for this, to work on our CDBG strategic plan. So those are the kind of things that we, we did. Unfortunately, we, we don't have that demand, uh, because we were asked not, you know, we were asked not to, uh, spend money and to be conscious of what we spent. So we clearly will not be doing that for twenty twenty-one.
Got you, thank you. Um, so for the community development budget, um, you have a community relations specialist. Is that a full-time or a part-time position?
That is a full-time position. Wait, hold on. Is that the, my part-time position? That is my part-time position.
Okay, thank you. Um, I only ask that because the salary, um, was a little low, so I just was wondering if that was for full-time or part-time. Um, so you mentioned that the Health Department, um, has an increase in their overtime budget to reflect a total of seventy-five thousand dollars for this year, um, and you alluded to it was for COVID response. Um, can you just kind of elaborate on that? Because in twenty twenty, uh, you only spent forty thousand in overtime, and that is when we were in really the thick of COVID. Um, so I would have probably expected that to be more than. Um, can you just explain why for twenty twenty-one it is significantly higher?
So we actually-
Even though we're, might, even though hopefully we're trending out of COVID?
Right, so we actually spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars in, in, um, COVID overtime. Uh, and the seventy thousand was really what, when we talked to the Department of Health, and they, at the beginning of twenty twenty, told us that we should prepare to have vaccine clinics, uh, that we would host on our own. We had to be able to pay, pay for those, um, that, that staffing. We were also told that we should look forward to doing uh, those vaccination clinics, uh, seven days a week and on Sundays. Uh, and so one of the things that we did was we built in this number. Now, if, if we don't have to do it, that's great. That money goes back to the general fund. But if we have to do it, we want to be prepared to pay people, and that includes flexible, um, scheduling. So we do try to flex schedule, but sometimes we simply can't, um, particularly if we have to pay for people to work on the weekends.
Okay, um, so that leads me to a question for either Mr. West or Mr. Garts, um, about if the Department of Health actually spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars in overtime, where was that uh, attributed to? But before you get to that, I do have one more question for Director Brown, uh, before we get to that. Um, can you explain the Public Health Assessment and what that is and why that was underspent in twenty twenty?
Right, so the, the Public Health Assessment, Assessment is an organization that we work with, and because of COVID, they weren't able to do the work that they had to do.
Okay, so, um, what type of work do we do with that organization?
So that's part of our, uh, we work with, uh, um, Plainfield Health Center, and they do, uh, they send our doctors, uh, when we have certain clinics. They're responsible for that. They're also responsible for overseeing some of our documentation that we have to submit to the state and federal government. Uh, they still are responsible for that, but they did not have to send out doctors and nurses, uh, for some of our clinics, simply because we were not able to host them.
Thank you. Um, Director West or Mr. Garts, if you can just explain, uh, the, where the overtime was attributed to?
We, uh, submitted a fair amount of that overtime to the coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund, uh, where we got, where we applied for about nineteen thousand dollars for reimbursement for, uh, overtime, and we submitted, uh, you know, a, a substantial amount of money through the CARES Act, you know, for another sixty thousand or so for, for overtime, uh, you know, incurred by the Health Division, and, you know, we've gotten, uh, recognition for, you know, both of those back through the CARES Act as well as the, uh, what's known as CESF. You know, so those, those were covered by grants.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. All right, Councilman Good, any questions for the Director?
Good evening, Director Brown.
Good evening, Councilman.
Um, thank you for all that you do. Uh, your department stands out, uh, from the others because you are literally meeting the needs of the people. And even in the midst of the pandemic, you've done very well, you and your staff. So thank you for that. Uh, I only have one question, and, and I, and I, and I don't know if it's something that I missed, or it was something that your department, as, as far as community development, is working on. And that question would be, where are you as far as the, uh, the vacant and abandoned property portal? How long before that's up and running, or is, you guys are working on it, or?
So, yes, I mean, we're still, that, that is still one of our goals to get that accomplished. I know that we, uh, we've spoken to some vendors to help us do that, uh, and so hopefully that is still one of our goals to accomplish this year.
Okay, where are you with it?
We've spoken to vendors.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilman, uh, Stacy Walsh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's Director Brown. Thank you very much, uh, for the presentation. Um, I'm not going to have any questions for tonight, just again, a thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. On behalf of my department, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council, Councilman Mills-Rance?
Good evening, Director Brown.
Good evening.
And I want to spend my time thanking you, uh, for being there for so many residents in Plainfield for the COVID nineteen vaccines. I know that reaching out to you, you've done, uh, did a mammoth job in terms of registering people. And that is very important to this community. Uh, so, thank you, and no questions.
Thank you, on behalf of my department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Finance Chair, Charles McCracken.
Um, good evening, Director Brown.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like also to echo a thank you for the mammoth effort that you've done with the seniors, reaching them to make sure that they were taken care of during this COVID time, and also with your assistance with people who have a need for, you know, paying rent and getting food. Um, your staff does a, a marvelous job, a very, you know, important job that a lot of people take for granted, but you guys are out there working and you're working hard. So I just want to thank you for all that, and most of my questions have been answered because I go to the PAS meetings.
You do.
And I'm, you know, very impressed with the job that the PAS does, um, with that whole staff that you have over there, uh, which is a very vital and important to our community. So thank you.
Thank you, sir, on behalf of my department.
Director West, you know, uh,
Shep Brown.
Oh, I was gonna, I, I'll direct it, I'll direct this to, uh,
Oh, I thought it was for me.
Well, I, 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 I'll go to you since, uh, since you interjected, but, um, Director Brown, your, your department is phenomenal.
Thank you, sir.
Um, this, this, this season, this year, twenty twenty, really tested the resiliency, the buoyancy, the, uh, the capability, uh, the temperament. Everything in your department was tested this year, where, you know, the, the, the coronavirus liter- literally had us just, just really bursting out of the seams in, in a, in a sense, in terms of just managing everything. Just because of the enormity of the task, you know, we're dealing with a global pandemic that, you know, people are, don't have as much, much angst as they did in the beginning. But in the beginning, it was absolutely terrifying for everyone, and your department was among the first responders that just didn't back down to the challenge. You know, it, 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 it was, uh, it, it's the hu- you, you, you did the human thing. Your whole department did the human thing, just, just doing what it can do to preserve humanity in, in a sense. And I, I just think that there's such an enormous, um, accomplishment. It's, it's such, I'm enormously proud. And I know all my council colleagues are as well, and just a job that we did under such, uh, such difficult circumstances. You know, some of us were able to, uh, in, in retreat, in, in a sense, when, when COVID initially hit. And your, your department really did not have that ability to kind of hunker down and, and wait till things were safe. You interjected yourself in the line of fire for that, you know, you and, and, and Dr. Nazir and the, and the ti- entire staff to just be giving kudos for, for what it's doing. And now, what it continues to do with the rollout of, of the vaccines. You know, and I know we have a lot more, uh, work to do in terms of that, so, you know, maybe I could just give you an opportunity to speak a little bit about uh, vaccination, because I know it's something that's important to residents, uh, and uh, just, just speak about what's on the horizon, what residents can, can expect for that.
Sure, thank you. Uh, so what residents can expect, or more vaccination clinics as vaccinations become available? Uh, we're certainly starting to see vaccinations, uh, available through commercial pharmacies, but we're going to start to see, uh, mobile vaccination, uh, sites. We're also going to start to see, and I know the county is working on this, but the county, I, I must say first that the county, uh, Union County has been a phenomenal partner. Uh, and, and I want to be, I want to say that and, and have that recognized, um, because a lot of what we've done in the city of Plainfield, we could not have done with their partnership. Also want to thank, uh, the Senior Center, uh, because in, I think, almost a second, they turned around and became our call center, uh, when other cities did not have that. And so they were able to, uh, get information in, and we were able to get that, um, those names of those citizens and residents that wanted vaccinations, uh, into the county system so that they can be serviced. And that was just punching out, you know, as, as a city, we would, we were just punching out. Um, going forward, I think that, uh, J and J, uh, has, has, uh, has really impacted us. We, we see the numbers, uh, kind of dipped, uh, when it comes to communities of color in particular. However, I do believe that once, I mean, it, unfortunately, with six people, got six out of seven million. Uh, unfortunately, um, that happened, but I think, uh, at, at one point, that we were managing about three to four hundred names of individuals a week and working on getting them vaccinated just through the county. We also work with the Health Center, uh, and we try to get people vaccinated wherever we can get them vaccinated. Uh, it, I was given one assignment for Mayor Matt, and that is, he has fifty-one thousand people plus in the city. My assignment is to provide the resources and to get as many people vaccinated, uh, as we can, and, and regardless of where they have to go. Um, wha- what, what we have tried to do, and what, you know, we listen to, to residents, and what we were concerned about is that people had to travel far distances to get their family, uh, vaccinated, and that was just terrible. Um, we are trying to prevent that, and that's how we started this whole relationship with the county. Uh, going forward, we're going to continue our relationship with the county. Uh, ideally, we will begin to do our own vaccinations through our Division of Health. Um, but, but that, that will only happen once the Department of Health releases that to this municipality. We've brought on three individuals to do outreach work. They're vulnerable population outreach workers, and they were through a Department of Health grant. And their goal is to go out into the community, and they've been doing it, and, and talk to communities and convince them not only just to get, uh, the vaccination, but to get tested, and if possible, to connect to wraparound services. And, and, and these, uh, individuals have been doing a phenomenal job, and they are grant-funded through the Department of Health. Uh, but I do look forward to, I, I, I feel like, uh, there's, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, I think that the numbers tell you that we are getting vaccinated at rated numbers. Uh, we just have to, to just keep doing it. Uh, we just have to keep convincing people to get vaccinated, uh, and, and- Uh, we just have to keep convincing people to get vaccinated uh and, and that, that's really it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, does the SEBAC have any questions? Did you receive any prepared for questions from the SEBAC?
Uh, yeah, you said you didn't do Sean McKenna, Councilman McKenna yet.
Sorry, Councilman. I don't believe you let me go, but go ahead. Sorry, Council.
Why? You know, you, you can, you don't always have to go last.
Uh, that's true. So you go last.
Um, Director Brown, fir- first of all, thanks for, for all your work during the, the last year plus. I know it, it was a scramble for you and, and there were a lot of situations that, that your department was, was really not for, and you had to adapt quickly. So um, kudos to you for that. A lot of my questions were answered. I, I have one clarification point um on Councilwoman Davis's overtime question that Director West uh if he answered to the, no, answered to the other overtime, but you, you had mentioned that the seventy-five thousand was in there for um anticipated vaccination overtime needs. Correct. And we, as you just said, we don't really know yet uh if, how much of that's going to be needed and, and when, et cetera. My question may be for Director West, so I'll let you guys decide which one wants to answer it, but how much of that seventy-five could possibly be reimbursed uh through federal funds? Or state or federal through state? Director West will take that.
Well, that was quick.
I know.
I, I would tell you that, that's, that's a major unknown. Uh, there are, you know, there's no CARES Act extension. There's no uh coronavirus supplemental uh funds. You know, it, it may be something that we, we use once we get the rules and regulations with regard to any monies that may be coming down from the federal government to the municipalities. You know, because you're gonna, there're gonna be rules. It's not free money. If, whatever it is that we might receive, we will have to come up with justifications for why we would need that money. And one of the things we would use is apply it to overtime for coronavirus-related matters.
Okay, so there's, there's always, there's some, could pop up somewhere maybe.
That's correct.
Um, and then my other question that was, wasn't touched on is, is the, one of the biggest I'd say the top, in the top ten, right? Eight, number eight on the list, complaints that, that I seem to get is pet license process. And I recall, you know, I've got COVID brain with the calendar, but I think it was maybe February that we approved the online, um, the contract for the online payment uh portal, uh, uh, processing, credit card processing. And I, I don't see the fluidity of that, or even if it's being done with the application because it, it, it appears to me like we're still filling out a PDF, printing it, putting it in the mail, mailing in a vaccine document instead of being able to fill it out online, attach the vaccination, pay for it, and then y- you guys get and mail the tag to the, to the homeowner or pet owner, both. Um, how, how do we get there to make that process just easy and one less touch for everybody down at City Hall? So I agree with you on that. Uh, however, we are, uh, we do have a vendor, the vendor's in place. Uh, we had to work through the same thing that the Fire Department had to work through. I think it's called All, All Pay. Uh, once that's in place, that took a while, uh, which is not under my, my purview. Uh, the next thing is the vendors had to communicate with themselves, reach each other to make sure that they are aligned. And I believe May first is when it kicks off. Okay, and they'll be able to Pay Online. Form Yes. Their rabies certificate, pay and be all done, get a little confirmation email and then get their tag in the mail. That's correct. And then also, and it will also include the three years. Okay, so they can, they can pick their poison based on their vaccinations. Correct. Okay, great. Thank you for that. You're welcome. I'm set.
All right, great. Uh, SEBAC, any questions from SEBAC?
Yes, um, good evening, uh, Director Brown. And on behalf of the entire SEBAC team, we'd like to thank you for all that you do. Uh, we know you do a lot and you did exceptionally well uh during the COVID, uh, the height of COVID in twenty twenty. Uh, we do have some questions. Uh, the first one we have, uh, I think you already answered that. It's about the overtime budget. So I, I won't be redundant and ask that again. Um. Let me just get to my spreadsheet. The next question we had was about the animal control. Uh, you're requesting a hundred and twenty-three, three ninety, and there was no detail included. And we just wanted to know if you could share how this money will be spent? And is this an external contract with fixed pricing that will not increase over calendar year twenty twenty rate?
So all municipalities, all municipalities are required to have a, a space in a, in a facility for, for animals. Uh, it is a requirement. Uh, the hundred and twenty-three thousand has been the rate that we have paid since I know of it, which was twenty sixteen. And it has not changed, and I believe it will be the same in twenty twenty-one. Their responsibility is to uh collect animals when necessary. They do take phone calls on a twenty-four hour basis. Uh, they do have an animal control officer or officers that will come out in certain situations and um they've been doing a great job. I mean, this is a new facility. We're, we're back, we're back at the Rock Avenue uh facility. We left Newark uh because of residents' concerns and residents lifted up the idea of possibly reusing that, and they've been quite successful in the work that they've been doing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next question was, uh, what is the forty thousand dollars in the community champion fees for? Uh, that's under community development.
Okay, so because we use a third-party collector in our uh community, in, in our Pro-Chance program, uh Department of uh Community Affairs, DCA, uh for the state, requires that we have a budget line set aside. And that is that budget line set aside. Uh, and it, it, it correlates with how much we collect. And so that, in order for us to collect from Pro-Chance and allow them to do the business of the city, we have to have that set aside.
Um, the next question is their uh Division of Health. You are requesting a salary or in your, in your budget for one new full-time and two part-time positions for vulnerable population coordinator and assistant. Um, this is a new program and it's not mentioned in your goal, so if you could just explain a little bit about that program.
Sure. So that is a program funded by uh Department of Health, and those are completely one hundred percent funded positions. The reason that it was not in the Division of Health's goals and objectives because the grant, because it is a grant, occurred after we submitted our documentation. And so what happened is, it, it was a fluid situation. We had to submit the, the grant and then we received notification and then we had to go through the hiring process. Uh, what will happen in twenty, when we do twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two? Uh, we will have it in our accomplishment column.
Okay, great. Thank you. And the last question, uh, under community development, you, you have a position Senior Program Development Specialist. Um, it appears that the salary increase to increases approximately four point seven percent. Whereas all the other increases for salary are more around one point five percent. Um, and the team wants to know why is the increase so high for this position?
I, 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 I won't speak to it being high, but I will say that uh the employees are, they see not only their steps, they could potentially receive their steps, so they could potentially receive uh their one point five. So it depends on where they are in their cu- in their careers and what the contract, which we don't, which I don't negotiate, uh, allocates for them to receive.
Okay, thank you. That was it. Thank you, Director Brown.
You're welcome. Thank you for having my department.
Okay, well, uh, that's everything. Thank you, uh, Director Brown for that uh presentation and answering the questions. We'll now move to citizens' particip- uh participation uh and public comment. So a total of thirty minutes has been allocated for this. Uh, if you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon to, uh, you'll be unmuted and at that time, give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Floor is open.
Nice, yeah.
If you'd like to speak, please use the hand raise option. If you dialed in by phone, it would be star nine.
Okay, hearing and seeing uh no individuals wishing to chime in via public comment, uh, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Both.
All in favor say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Public comment is now closed, and I'll now entertain a motion in a second for adjournment of this meeting.
I'll move, Council President.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. See you next meeting.
Good night.